Commissioner Larkin is on his way from the airport. He will be here shortly, but we will go ahead and get started, and we apologize for being so late. Would everyone please join me, or welcome to the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, February 10th. Would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to make notice that the commissioners you see present here, Commissioner Booker, myself, Commissioner Mulrooney, Commissioner Abel, and Commissioner Farhi, met in executive session just prior to this meeting, and we met to discuss matters of legal, real estate, and personnel. So I will go ahead and call for public participation. Radnor Township residents are encouraged to give public comment relevant to items on the current agenda during the first public comment period. Comments relevant to matters not on the current agenda should be held for second and final public comment period. All comments are limited to five minutes. Thank you and welcome.
Do we have our slide projector person tonight?
Hi. Thank you. Hi, Leslie Morgan, Ward 1. I'm sorry my commissioner is late. I'm sorry we had to start so late. I just wanted to bring some boards tonight because over the many years that I've been coming to the meetings and getting to know Bob, and I'm sorry he isn't here, I wanted to say a special bye-bye to Bob. And I remember him differently than maybe some people recently would remember Bob because Bob and I were incredibly successful in fighting for trees when other organizations who would like to think that they're tree huggers weren't. So I was going to give people some examples, and one that's near and dear to my heart was 115 Stratford, which is right behind the farmer's market and right behind our little neighborhood of farm in Windsor. And what happened there was you had a tight site, and much like what's happening with the Hamilton property, the developer wanted to put too much density on, and they wanted to put townhouses because it's cheaper and it's more profitable to build. So they finally got their way, but the neighborhoods, they retained an attorney and an engineer, and we proved certain things and we got some things done. But when they were under construction, they took down trees that they were not supposed to. Oh, welcome. This is my commissioner, Commissioner Larkin. They took down some 40- and 50-foot trees, and they had been earmarked and they had been protected under our shade tree policy, but they still took them down. And I remember that I was in California that summer, basically living in California, and I got a call on a Saturday, and there's hours difference, and it was Bob Zankowski telling me, "You're not going to believe this." And he and I formulated a plan together, and the township got a record fine in the state of Pennsylvania. If I could have everybody's attention, because this is really important, Bob Zankowski got a record fine of any tree from a developer at the time in the state of Pennsylvania for the township. It was $60,000. Also, what the neighborhood got is we forced him, and John was part of that, John Rice, because he found a tree farm near him, we got something like 28-foot trees, and people said, "No, you can't get 28-foot trees and replant them." Well, we did, and they're there, and they're thriving, and so we didn't have to wait all those years. So that's how, one of the arguments that Bob and I fought together, I call him my big tree hugger. The second thing that we fought together, not quite as successfully because we didn't have the majority of the Board of Commissioners nor the conservation people on our side, but as you know, Ardrossen, where we purchased a record amount of land, in fact, we paid more per acre than the people who are building their houses there did, for some reason, for scrubland, but we got him to agree to do a buffer, the developer, who is one of the heirs, Ed. And Ed tried to argue that the ground, the actual soil at Ardrossen was different than anywhere else in the township. It was different soil so that he could only plant saplings. And I called Bob and I said, "Bob, no, it's a bridge too far." And Bob and I argued that together, and he still argued it until he resigned because Ed keeps trying to defy us and not complete that buffer. The buffer is not complete, and it's not per design, and he should be fined again, and I know he's had multiple fines, but Bob and I really worked that, at least so that we could prove to people that, you know what, and I hope people hold their ears, the soil at Ardrossen is no different than the soil on Farm Road. And there are zoning codes and, you know, buffer designs that he, we have to make people adhere to, and Ed had to adhere to that for the most part. So that was one of the things. And then recently, as you know, he replanted the town center. So when I think of Bob Zankowski, I think of this big guy who loves sports, who we're all going to miss. Maybe we battled with him, some fairly, some unfairly, but I call him my big tree hugger now. So I wanted to say that. And let me see if I can, can I fit one more item in? Okay. There is an item on this agenda about townhouses. Could we get this clear? And the last meeting I couldn't attend, 501 Shade Land. Every time, there seems to be somebody who wants to get accepted and waived out of the stormwater. And I'm under construction for my own personal house right now. I'm adding 500 square feet, you guys, just a tiny little bit. In fact, most people's dining rooms are bigger than what I'm adding, but I'm having to put three pits to the tune of $17,000. And so I say to you, with what you're going to talk about tonight with the townhouses, yeah, they're in floodplain, and yeah, they're going to be adding impervious. I don't want to hear about rain gardens. I want the differential between what they could put if they were on high ground, put into the stormwater fund. At the very least, they should invest. They should not be, I should not be discriminated because I bought in high land. And I think you would get most people to vote on that in a referendum, and there really is no cause of action not to vote on it. So I just want to remind you that you just waived 501 Shade Land, and they were adding 6,000 square feet of impervious, and they got waived. I'm adding 500, and I have to spend $17,000. So maybe we should relook at these things because it could be a lot of money into the stormwater tax. I'll save my other one for later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Again, the description for public participation is not based on any legislation that I've ever been made aware of, so I object to it. But thankfully for Mr. Larkin, who likes to in a monotone interrupt me, my comments at the start of this meeting will be dealing with items specifically on the agenda, or rather, the fact that it is very difficult to comment on two of the items on the agenda. The first item I'd like to comment on is the acceptance of township manager's resignation and approval of separation agreement. That's item two. I haven't seen the separation agreement that this board is going to vote on. I took a look over there on the table. It's not there. It's not in the packet. Where is it?
The board has copies of the separation agreement?
I don't. I'm not on the board. So where is the separation agreement? You're not in executive session right now. You're going to be taking formal action on a separation agreement. Why has it not been provided to the public so that the public can comment on it at such time as item two on the agenda comes up? Blink, blink. That's cute. Number three, appointment of acting township manager and township secretary. Who are those individuals going to be? Blink, blink. It's not in the packet. It's not on the table over there. It's not described in the agenda. Now, why am I bringing this up tonight? Number one, it shows again lack of preparation for the meeting by the board, but also the problems with the approach to public comment demonstrated two weeks ago by Board President Jack Larkin, who showed up 25 minutes after 6:30 tonight for the meeting. Here's the problem with having public comment in the way that Mr. Larkin, apparently without legislation, wants to conduct public comment. The last meeting, items on this agenda were brought up and introduced, and then Mr. Larkin immediately demanded public comment, despite the fact that those items could be amended. And as a result, the public was precluded from commenting when final action finally was determined by this board. There is a reason why this board, for as long as I have been coming to meetings, has items on the agenda in the following order, in terms of dealing with them. There's an introduction, and usually a second. And then there is board comment so that the public understands what is going on for that topic. And then there is staff comment. And then, and only then, is public comment, because at that point, the public has the best opportunity to comment on the action about to be taken by the board. Otherwise, the public comment is meaningless because all you have is an introduction. You don't have the final project yet. And in fact, at the last meeting, we saw that, where an agenda item was amended, but Mr. Larkin would not allow public comment after the amendment. And as was pointed out over and over again by me, you don't have an agenda that's worth the paper it's printed on because the public has no idea what the final result is. And again, two issues here tonight before the consent agenda, looking at the packet and looking at that table over there, provides the public with no information as to what you're going to be doing. Now, we can all speak as to the motivations of Mr. Larkin for doing that, but I think that at its core, it's timidity. It's a way to be a rubber stamp and prevent the public from actually having the data to comment on. That shows rigidity and a desire to control the narrative despite what's occurring in front of the board. This board should not have its mind made up until people weigh in from the staff, from fellow board members, and from the public before reaching a final determination. And I want to give an example. That example was something that came up two meeting, or excuse me, two weeks ago at the meeting, when you were talking about-
Mr. Sherry, you have one-
Monosyllabic monotone interruption by Mr. Larkin, as usual. It was the issue about emergency access to buildings and a proposed ordinance. And a member of this board said something during board comment that I couldn't comment on because public comment was, at that point, over. But he made a point that I hadn't considered, and that was the aesthetics of having this outside quasi-lock box so that emergency responders could get into a building. And that person was Sean Farry, a person that, the public record is quite clear, I take issue with, on a personal level and a professional level. But that shows a weakness of me, that I was close-minded and didn't hear him before I made up my mind. And he raised an interesting point. I don't think it's this positive. I don't think safety should be outrayed by aesthetics, but Mr. Farry, it's something I didn't think about, and credit to you for bringing it up. And that should be the philosophy of this board when it comes to public comment, hearing what the public has to say-
Mr. Sherry, your time is up.
Hearing what the public, the man who was 25 minutes late wants me to wrap it up.
Mr. Sherry, your time is up.
So I'll just end it with that. Please go back to the original process that has been followed by this board-
Mr. Sherry, your time is up.
-for years. Thank you.
Point of order, can we give Mr. Sherry a copy of the agreement so he can, he can look on it, at it?
Once the board, excuse me, once it's, we get to the point on the agenda and the board approves it, it's going to be available to the public.
Well, it's the next, it's the next item.
Public comment, if we haven't seen the agreement.
Mr. Sherry, your time is up.
It's sort of like Lehman Brothers thing, you guys. You need to know some information why he's leaving.
Would you, would you like to come up and?
Yeah.
Ward 7, Mark DiNaprio. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a contractor, so I normally like speak with a booming voice. I don't want to hurt your ears. I'm just kind of curious why Mr. Zankowski is leaving because, I mean, I was driving down Lancaster Avenue, and that landscape was completely denuded. And sometimes I see these meetings where people will speak for like an hour or so, removing one tree, replacing a tree, and here, landscape the size of a football field, probably bigger, was denuded, and there's no explanation. And then we're going to have to, you're going to make a decision before anybody's aware of what he did. We don't even know who's replacing him, and we don't know whether there are any accomplices, you know, resulting from that denunciation of the land. What if someone else in the township was involved? We don't know. There's no investigation. And I think-
Ms. Morgan said, "I don't think we own the land," and I just said, "We-"
Commissioner, public comment.
Well, no, I'm just actually curious why he's leaving, and I think that, I think a lot of people are just wondering. I mean, it doesn't have to be contentious, but we should know why, and then we should see the separation agreement, and we should see who's the interim township manager, and have a public comment prior to that, because maybe some people don't agree. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item two, which is acceptance of the township manager's resignation and approval of the separation agreement. I will so move, is there a second?
I'll second.
John, do you want to lead us in?
Yes. You know, what has been provided to the board is both the Bob Zankowski's letter of resignation and a proposed separation agreement, which has been executed and is before the board for approval. Let me just read the resignation letter first. I think that that would be appropriate. This is a letter from Robert A. Zankowski dated February 4th, 2020. Dear Board of Commissioners, I am writing to inform you that I have decided to resign effective immediately as the Radnor Township manager. When I arrived 10 years ago, the township faced a number of obstacles and no small amount of turmoil. With the assistance of an excellent senior staff, we were able to address and resolve almost all of these challenges. I believe that I am leaving the township in a much better place than when I arrived. I want to thank each of the former and current commissioners for the support, encouragement, and vision in working with me to restore Radnor as a preeminent community to live and work. I will always value my service to the township and its residents very truly yours, Robert A. Zankowski. So that's the manager's letter of resignation. The separation agreement, I'll just summarize. It's very straightforward, separation agreement and general release. What it provides to Mr. Zankowski is four months' salary as severance. It provides six months of health insurance coverage as severance. There is a provision with respect to if Mr. Zankowski would file an unemployment comp claim that the township would not oppose that. That's actually between the claimant and the unemployment department of the state. All township property is to be returned to the township within 14 days. A large part of the agreement is a fairly lengthy waiver and release of all claims, including reemployment. I'm not going to go through that. This document will be available once the board approves it. There is a, also a non-disparagement clause, which both parties have agreed to, and that's it. That is the total severance agreement and compensation in terms of this general release signed by Mr. Zankowski. So that's what's in front of the board. As I said when we started out, this is a document that will be available once approved by the board and signed by Mr. Larkin as the board president, as will the letter of resignation.
Thank you, John. I'll get started off with commissioner comment and say two different things. The first is I'm extraordinarily grateful to the township manager, Bob Zankowski, for all of the fantastic work that he has done for Radnor Township. I strongly echo the comments that he made in his letter, which is that he left the township, he is leaving the township a better place now, a far, far better place now than it was when he first came here. The second thing that I'm going to say is that no one is going to hear from me, and my anticipation is that they will not hear from the rest of the members of the board any information about the causes of the manager's resignation. That's for a couple of different reasons. One of them is we have privacy obligations to the employees who work here. We are not required by the law, nor are we permitted by the law, to tell everybody in the public the details of all of our personnel decisions. You, many of you know Bob Zankowski personally. There's nothing that prevents you from going and asking him the question, but we're his employer, or his former employer, as the case may be, and we're not in a position to tell you the specific reasons that he resigned. Moreover, we honestly don't know all the specific reasons that he designed, he resigned, since this is his determination. So you're not going to hear from me, you're not going to hear from the rest of the board is my, certainly my hope and my anticipation. That's the last that I'll say on it, except to end by saying again, I'm very grateful to the township manager, Bob Zankowski, who, as I said, has done a fantastic job for Radnor Township.
So I would just like to echo what Commissioner Larkin said. I have had the opportunity for the past two years to work very closely with Mr. Zankowski, and I know that he is, he is passionate. He is a very committed individual, and he has given 110% to our community, and we are very fortunate to have had him for the 10 years that we had him, and I thank him for the work he did. Those who know when he arrived, that the turmoil that the township was in, he took it and he really did turn it around. And not only do we have him to thank for many wonderful projects in our township, but we have him, we can thank him for many of the wonderful staff that we have, we have here as well. And I wish him well. I wish him the best of luck, and thank him very much for his service.
So I echo what everyone's saying. I mean, I consider Bob, you know, as much of a friend as one could be in the setting of a township. He's, did leave the township better than he, he started, and like you said, he was passionate. My concern is, just one moment, is, is not, is basically, the manager is an employee, and I get the issue that this is a personnel issue, and I get that thought process, but I see the role as a manager of one as a public figure. The hiring side, I think the contract would be made public, and I think the separation side, it should be made public too. And like what John said, he summarized it, and that's accurate. I think the agreement is fair. It's probably not perfect. You can pull people here in the room. They may like it, they may not. But I think that the public should be allowed to view this document. And the process has moved along, where we've gotten, you say Bill stepped in, and he's doing a great job, but I think sacrificing a week or two so this can get digested to the public would make the most sense. You know, I've seen an incomplete packet before, and having this almost really is a cram in I'm uncomfortable with. I get it, we, we talked about it, but I've seen this multiple times, and I think it's unfair to residents, it's on staff, it's unfair to all the stakeholders here. I saw this in my ward with the lights, where there's a last-minute change. I saw it in the Wawa issue where they put plans that they had three hours to look at it. You, the public, deserve to see what this is. It's not going to change the vote necessarily, but you still should at least see what this So with all that said, like I said, Bill, I think you've done a great job initially stepping in, but I would like to see this tabled, so I wouldn't make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
Is there a second for the motion to table? Hearing none, the motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment?
Public comment on what, Mr. Larkin? We haven't seen the document. This is the problem with this type of an approach. Now, a couple of things that you said, I believe, bear some comment on. What are you claiming to be barred from talking about as opposed to taking the option of not talking about? The Sunshine Act gives this board the discretion, if it so chooses to invoke, to not comment on personnel matters. That's a decision as opposed to a mandate. There are certain types of federal privacy laws that supersede the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. HIPAA, BRRPA, those types of things potentially. Not hearing that. All I'm hearing is, "We don't want to talk about it." Or you may have made a decision in private not to talk about it, but that's different. Let me give you an example about another manager who left, albeit under different circumstances. Dave Bayshore, he left this township. Remember how that process played out? You do, because it occurred in public. The former 6th Ward Commissioner, Tom Masterson, excellent trial lawyer, I might add, put forth the evidence in terms of why that township manager was leaving. That might be applicable to Mr. Zankowski, may very well not be applicable to Mr. Zankowski, but we don't know because you're not giving the reason under the auspices of personnel, and you're not letting us see the document before you vote on it. You had John Rice give a summary about what John Rice thinks is in there. Why have an issue with how John Rice views contracts? Here's the reason why. As Ms. Morgan pointed out, a couple of years ago, Mr. Rice apparently gave a prior version of this board legal advice that it could enter into a confidential agreement with vestiges of Lehman Brothers, multimillion dollars. He was wrong. The Office of Open Records slapped that down. How do I know? Because my brother and I had to pursue a right-to-no request to get it. Now, apparently, we're going to see this document after the board has already voted on it, and Mr. Rice has already said, it's his words, that this board already executed something having to do with it, or already agreed to something in it, as opposed to voting on it in public. So this board is deprived from people looking at the contract other than John Rice from a legal perspective and offering input. For what rationale? Not clear. Not stated by John Rice. What was the rationale that he gave for the public not seeing the proposed separation agreement? Didn't hear it. Unlikely to hear it. And it's not merely because John Rice is offered with his words. It's because there is no rationale, given that it's coming before the board. How can you comment on an agreement if you don't have the agreement? How can you take official action when the public can't even see it and offer opinions and insight as to various clauses into it, other than, "John Rice seems to think it's okay." He did talk about an anti-disparagement clause. That perked my ears up. How extensive is it? Why is it in there? Why are we doing this? Again, this is not a private institution here. This is a township board. It is a township board that, again, per its discretion, can if it chooses to make this a personnel matter in terms of your deliberations about what to do. But once you're going to be voting on a contract, why isn't the public seeing it at the meeting and being able to comment on it before you vote? Again, timidity by Mr. Larkin and the people that enable him. You should be wanting to hear from people saying, "Why is this in there? And why are we agreeing to this? And what is the underlying basis for it?" You can certainly decline to answer those questions under the auspices of personnel, but at least then the public has some idea where you're coming from. Again, awkwardness for meetings. And we see here, by the way, tonight, that Mr. Larkin apparently has flipped how he handles the order of meetings, because now it was board comment and staff comment and then public comment. Are we switching back, Mr. Larkin? Are you just being arbitrary in terms of that? This is problematic. Board meetings should proceed in an orderly manner with the public having the information-
One minute, Mr. Sherry.
Oh, Mr. Larkin has been consistent on that. Give them one-minute warning. Have to be consistent about having the information to the public, at least at the time of the meeting. I could understand that, given sort of the timeframe we're talking about here, you were still working through the details about the proposed agreement before the meeting, but it's clear you have something to vote on now. Why isn't it printed out and over on the table over there? Why are you holding it back? Why are you eroding public trust by proceeding with meetings this way? It's not appropriate. There is no point of having public comment on official action if, again, not only is the public aware what the official action is going to be, but they can't even review it because you didn't put it in the packet or on the table. Please have some level of self-awareness to realize that it doesn't make sense to have public comment if you've given the public nothing to comment on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Is there any additional public comment?
I just want to know why Mr. Zankowski is resigning. I wanted to know why Mr. Zankowski is resigning. Is he resigning because he feels like it, or is he resigning in a probrium because of some scandal? And that will help us determine whether the separation agreement is just or not, because if he resigns in a probrium, he's getting four months of severance, he could get potential unemployment, and all these things. Maybe he did something really bad, or maybe he did nothing. Maybe he just wanted to resign. And I think a lot of people are curious about that. And right now, by keeping it a mystery, it's going to have these questions continue on and on for weeks. And I think a lot of other people are asking these questions too. But that's it. I'm going to withdraw my comment now.
Commissioner Larkin, would it be appropriate to provide some more explanation, or, John, would you like to explain or answer any of the questions? At least, it's signed, not by the board, it's signed by, signed by manager Zankowski, so it's not signed by the board until after it's approved. So it's not signed by the board until after it's approved.
It's signed by Mr. Ziankowski, it's in front of the board for approval. I don't have any other comment. It's a personnel issue, period. I read the resignation letter. That's pretty clear to me. So I have nothing else to add. Rich?
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Vote passes.
Abstention.
So we have two abstentions then?
No, no, no.
Just one? Okay. Vote continues to pass, one, two, three, four, five, two, one abstention with Commissioner Enderly absent from the dais. Moving on to three. Appointment of acting township manager per section 5.5 of the HRC and township secretary per section 2.07 of the HRC. I will move to open nominations. Is there a second?
A second.
I will nominate Bill White to be acting manager and also township secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, I will move to close the nomination period. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there public comment on the nominations?
There is. I'm closing the nomination period. I think I heard a second, so we're closed. And now I will open the floor to public comment. Is there any public comment? Well, first, we're doing commissioner comment. Is there any commissioner comment on this?
I wholeheartedly support Bill's nomination. I think he has stepped in and done a really good job for us the past couple of weeks. I appreciate that. He has come forward with a lot of confidence and grace and I feel very, very secure in Bill taking over and managing the township. I think we're in very good hands.
I concur. I mean, it's kind of bittersweet. It's bittersweet all around. But I've been doing this for two-plus years and I have the confidence and the faith in you. And good luck going forward. I mean, not good luck, you won't need it, much success going forward.
I'm going to just simply comment as newest commissioner who's here tonight. Bill has been great. Bringing me up to speed really took me through the budget and the finances in such a professional and really smart way. Thank you for that. And these last couple of weeks have not been easy for anybody and you stepped in and stepped up. And I really appreciate it and I look forward to working with you as manager.
Is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment?
Bill, I think you and I have known each other as long as I've known Bob. And he's sort of mentored you and you've mentored him. So I think it's a wise choice right now. I'd also, because Bill's strength is finances, maybe we could get an early start, Bill, and maybe not have a tax increase this year since we had two back-to-back six percenters. Maybe we could do that with your expertise. Okay? Thank you.
Mark Donafreho again, Ward seven. Now, since we don't know why Mr. Ziankowski left, I have a question. Is it prudent to make Mr. White the interim township manager because maybe he was somewhat related to the reason why Mr. Ziankowski left? Maybe the board could provide some feedback in that regard. And if we can't get any clarity on that, maybe there could be a compromise person who could be the interim until we establish that fact why Mr. Ziankowski left. And I think the township does have a lot of problems with stormwater. And I think a really good compromise candidate would be Mr. Norsini. Because we need a township engineer to deal with infrastructure issues. And I think he has the mechanical skills, the engineering know-how. And, you know, as a contractor, I want to see someone who's a dealer, not someone that I do not know whether he had some influence or role with Mr. Ziankowski. Now, if Mr. Ziankowski did leave on a good note, then I would have no problem with Mr. White. But since I don't... Is there a lot of feedback when I'm speaking?
I'm sorry about that.
Straight up, straight up, move close.
I'm not good at that.
Just move a little closer. Just straight up, straight up.
Some either like zero or 10.
You got it.
I got it? Okay. Yeah, Mr. White, if there's no problem with Mr. Ziankowski, then I wouldn't have a problem with Mr. White. If there is a problem or if it's not established, I think a good compromise candidate would be Mr. Norsini. I think he's worked here for 10 years and he's worked well in another township. So we have major issues with stormwater. I know my street is flooding. I know five of my neighbors are now starting to complain. We can't get a culvert in. I know Mr. Norsini wants to do it. I know Mr. Farri wants to do it. And I just think that he's the person who can get this done. Thank you.
Incidentally, although his name was not nominated and there wasn't an opportunity for public comment before nominations were closed, I would actually echo, not necessarily for township manager, the prior speaker's beatification of Mr. Norsini. He's always very well-prepared for meetings. One wishes that would be said about the solicitor. Another story for another time. Here's a number of issues in terms of the... And by the way, in case anybody thinks that's an inexpensive shot, go watch the prior meeting about the solicitor on Commissioner Abel's agenda topic on towing. Anyhow. In terms of the appointment of the acting township manager, it is concerning that we have somebody nominated, and this is by no means the fault of Mr. White, somebody nominated for an acting township manager role without this board providing any details whatsoever on Mr. Ziankowski leaving. That opens the door to concerns about what, if anything, Mr. White could even theoretically be associated with. Now, with that last topic, Mr. Booker asked John Rice, can you provide any more details? Answer, nah, it's personnel. Again, personnel is discretionary. You decide whether or not you want to use the cloak of executive session for personnel. Again, presuming no other federal privacy law or any other law that supersedes the Sunshine Act. But don't hide behind personnel in the absence of any other superseding privacy law and say, we're not going to tell you about it. No, by the way, don't have any concerns about who we put Mr. Ziankowski's place. That's not fair. That's the whole purpose of being forthcoming with information to the extent not protected. That's why you show people in the audience the apparently Bob Ziankowski-executed document. Thank you, Mr. Booker, for at least getting that clarification from Mr. Rice. But there is absolutely no reason to be upset with the public for asking questions like, is this somehow associated with Mr. White? Is there any way that Mr. White could have had any type of involvement in terms of whatever reason Mr. Ziankowski left? That's the problem when you cloak everything in personnel and elect, and it is an election, not to tell the public about it. It's going to have that level of concern. Also, I would point out that if this is an acting township manager, is there any reason why RFP for new township manager isn't on the agenda? Is there a reason why you have to wait? Isn't that something that should be authorized tonight if it is just an acting township manager that Mr. White is doing? Why is that not on the agenda? Again, all of these are questions that people in the public can have if you adopt the discretionary tactic that you're allowed to have in terms of personnel. If you decide that you're not going to be like Tom Masterson and prior iterations of this board and actually give the data to the public. It's your choice. But you oftentimes will have a choice as to whether or not, because there is no federal law on point or governing Pennsylvania law, as to whether you're going to be forthcoming with data. And when you elect not to do that, expect the erosion of additional public trust. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Vote passes six to zero with Commissioner Enderly off the dais. Moving now to consent agenda.
President Larkin, just a question of the chair. Do we have a process going forward to find a township manager? We have an acting manager now, but at some point, we'll need a full-time manager.
Yeah, my anticipation is that we should have an RFP out for a full-time manager in the next two weeks or so. There's no good reason why we couldn't have it on the next agenda, then I wouldn't imagine.
Second question, and to piggyback off that initial question, is that you're... Do you envision as part of that process, we will have a public roll and discussion?
So I don't know exactly what that process is going to look like yet. I know that we have had a public role in the past. I'd be shocked if we didn't have the public participate in some way, whether that's a free-for-all where everybody shows up, or if we have a smaller group session where more interested people show up, different stakeholders show up. I don't know. I'm going to suggest that that's a decision that the board should make jointly.
Okay. Well, I'll go on the record now saying I think as part of the process, the public needs to have a voice in this discussion.
Are you suggesting having kind of a public focus group to help craft the RFP? Or is this in the interview process you're suggesting? I mean, I think both would be fine, but...
Yeah, I'd be open to both. I'd also be open to looking at, I think the school board was the last body that went out and found the superintendent. Kind of see what they did in their process. That seemed to work well and how they've gone forward on some of their other issues. And, you know, over the next two weeks, probably discuss with other townships how they've gone out and done a search.
I know the school district, they always, they hire a search firm. They have a, because it's very hot, you know. So they, and I don't know if that's something we would want to consider. So there could be a couple of different options.
Okay.
Commissioner Larkin, may I ask when the separation agreement will be available for the public for review? Is that going to be tonight, minutes from now, hours from now, or days from now? And again, I would implore you to, or Solicitor Rice, to give some more, to assuage any concerns that have been raised here. I think that some more explanation would be in order, at least explaining that this is a mutual agreement. So when is the agreement going to be available and can you provide any more detail? And once again, I implore you to discuss some of the, some more so that the people can know a little bit more about it.
It'll be available after this meeting, the agreement.
And I just want to interject. It's going to be available not later than Tuesday when the packet would ordinarily be put online as a complete packet. I'm aware that there's going to be potentially mechanical issues. I have to sign the thing. It has to be scanned. It has to be put online. I don't want to promise it's going to be immediately after the meeting, but it'll be at a minimum, at the very latest, up with the next packet. As far as providing additional guidance, the next, the packet on like Tuesday that we would normally put online. So in terms of the additional reasons, this is a resignation. Anybody's free to ask Bob his reasons. His reasons may be different from our individual reasons for accepting his resignation. If you want to know why he resigned, talk to Bob. And anything else will be putting words in his mouth. Consent agenda. Is there any consent item that the board would like to remove? Is there any commissioner who wants to remove an item?
Yes, Letter F.
Okay. Is there any other item to remove? Is there any item that staff wants to remove? Or item that the public wants to remove? Hearing none, let's go to item F. Harb 2020-01 for 18 Oak Lane enclose existing back porch. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Booker, this is yours. Why don't you lead us in?
I just wanted to raise it so that it's an item that the public can hear about, so someone could talk about what the issue is and the approval that we're granting.
I'm assuming that's going to be you, Mr. Norsini.
Actually, Mr. President and I don't have any involvement with the Harb.
Okay. Is there anybody on staff who can lead us into this?
I apologize, Commissioner. I, there's no one from the codes department that's here tonight.
Okay. Other than what is in the packet, I guess we don't have any additional staff information. Commissioner Booker, is there any information that you want?
418 Oak Lane enclose existing back porch. It's on the consent agenda. So my assumption is, is that there's no objection from the staff. I would ask the chair, again, for items that are approvals with specific substantive items that are going to be approved by the board, that they not be on the consent agenda. The consent agenda should be for regular and recurring items that are routine in nature and generally don't require specific authorization. So I'm going to vote to approve this and I hope that no one in the public had an objection to this. If they did, this was their time and they're going to miss their time to so state to the board. So thank you.
So, by way of reminder, this is a Harb approval. So the Historical Architecture Board has already reviewed this and decided that it was appropriate. There was also an opportunity to comment on that for the Harb if anybody wanted to. And this doesn't violate our stormwater ordinance, this doesn't violate our SALDO, this doesn't violate our zoning ordinance, it's just whether it meets the requirements of the Harb. So I've got no problem taking it off consent agenda to discuss, obviously, but this is reasonably unexceptionable.
So for something like this back porch, again, my view is it would probably be better practice to have that as a separate item rather than on consent agenda and have a review just so the public's aware of it. And it gives that much more transparency and the availability of the public to know, at least to know about these types of approvals that are going so that they're not caught off guard. That would be my request.
Okay. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Just really quickly, if we could, is that the consensus of the board? Does this Harb approval is being treated the same as all of the Harb approvals from prior meetings? So if we're going to have a shift in that, we certainly can put it under the committee reports, but if that's what the board would like us to do, it's, we'll do it.
No, we've never treated harbor permits as anything other than consent agenda. It would be nice if we could have somebody from codes in the future to be here so that they can answer questions from Commissioner Booker or anybody else about them, but we don't have anybody here tonight. And again, this is fairly unexceptionable, so I'm not surprised that it's not...
Yeah, that, having someone here from codes, that will be done.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Enderly absent. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes six to zero with Commissioner Enderly absent. Committee reports. Item 5A, Resolution Number 2020-21, engage in Granicus to purchase website hosting, maintenance and licensing services in addition to peak agenda management, government transparency, suite and boards and commission software. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Moving to commissioner comment. Is there any commissioner comment?
So I would just first like to thank Mr. White and Ms. Gallagher. I sent them a significant number of questions over the weekend, once I had the opportunity to really take a look at this and download a couple of the case studies that these... How do you say it? Is it Granicus? Granicus? Okay. So my initial questions were around the funding, because I didn't quite see that in the legislative memo that we were, that was in our packet. So I had just asked around the implementation fees and had asked around the cost, because it is more expensive on a yearly basis than what we currently have. And I'm just wondering if you, either one of you wouldn't mind, you gave me a very nice answer, I'm just wondering if you could share that with everybody else, so everyone's aware.
Sure. I'll kick it off and then I'll hand... I'll kick it off, and then I'll, I'll hand it over to Molly for the, the more detailed responses. On the budget side, we're paying roughly $31,000 for our current provider. So, that's what was included in the budget. And when we were preparing the 2020 budget, we were also aware of the one-time implementation fee, which is a cost that we were going to pay regardless of which vendor we ultimately selected, because that's the price of doing a web design, which isn't just the look and feel of it, but it's how it functions in the background, it's how it deals with the records management, and the storage of all the documents, and the searchability. That's all part of our decision to make this recommendation. And in terms of the, the slightly higher cost, we were reaching the end of our term with our current provider. In all likelihood, that was going to go up, just due to normal cost of business type of increases. So, we weren't taken aback by the, the slightly higher price of the annual maintenance with this firm. Adding to that, that there's a couple additional pieces of software that are, we're purchasing. So, there's some additional costs there, and Molly can go into detail. So, on the budgetary side, we incorporated the, the one-time fee that we would incur in 2020, and then going forward, the annual impact is just like $2,000 or $3,000 more than what we're paying now, plus normal growth. So, we weren't that concerned with that price either. And when you see the product and the possibilities that the website has with this firm, it's pretty impressive. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Molly to maybe go into a little bit more detail about the software packages and the reasons why.
Hi there. I'd also like to thank Granicus is actually here tonight, Manuel, and Scott. So, if we really get in the weeds, they're happy to step up and have some comments. On the staff side, we're excited, because as Bill mentioned, the current technology is six years old, and we're at a renegotiation point. Is this better? Sorry. Is it better? Okay, good. It's a renegotiation point for us anyway with Civic Plus. So, we were shopping the market, and Granicus has become a leading vendor in our eyes. They work with local municipalities, including Lower Marion and Abington. And in my discussions with those folks, we've had favorable responses. They also currently service 4,500 government agencies. So, our confidence is high in their ability to serve our municipality. Our current website, the homepage in particular, is very cluttered and outdated. We are excited about the possibility of cleaning that up and having a more modern presentation aesthetically for our community. We're also not currently ADA compliant, and that's a big issue in terms of vulnerability to litigation. Granicus would provide us with an ADA compliant, all-in-one Radnor branded website. So, it will, will still continue to provide emergency announcements, non-emergency announcements, community events, weather-related events. We, within that initial implementation pricing, we actually get three-in-one. Of course, it's the first migration and redesign. And then, if there were a special event, like a Villanova championship, or if there was an emergency event, we have an overlay homepage that takes over our regular homepage to really focus and communicate whatever emergency that may be. And then, at the end of the contract, we have a third refresher for the site. We also have the opportunity to digital, digitalize our agenda and meetings process. That helps us on the backend. So, as cluttered as our current site is on the front end, we, as managers and administrators, have a hard time on the backend. It's very clunky. This one is extremely user-friendly. It allows us to control our content and push out our messaging with ease. A prime example is the interaction with social media. It has one-click technology. So, whatever I'm posting, or any, any department head is to the website, within one click, we can get to Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. Is there any other specific questions?
So, I think, I think it's great. I wholeheartedly support it. I think the fact that they're going to go through and do a content review, because right now, our website is a maze of pages that don't have any information on them, pages that have old information on them. I know how hard it is to maintain and keep a website up-to-date and keep it relevant. So, and certainly, the fact that you'll go through and do that content analysis for it, I think is great. Just quickly, the, and I know there's a lot of, you know, one of the questions I asked was, you know, what type of additional transparency? We do have a lot of plugins. So, how do the plugins that are on our current site, for instance, the financial reporting, the checkbook being online, all that stuff, that will all migrate over? Does that stay the same? The one feature that we just added, what, last year? That will all still be operational?
Absolutely, yeah. The, the open finance page is its own website that we subscribe with our software, our financial software provider for. So, that'll be incorporated in the new site through the, through a link. But it's some additional transparency is during meetings, the agenda can be live. It can be bookmarked with the live streaming of the video, which would be a new feature. And on the video side too, folks can bookmark, or items can be bookmarked throughout the meeting. So, if, if you want to jump straight to the, whatever the last item is on the agenda and just hear about that, you don't have to scroll, or wait, or watch the entire meeting. You can jump through. So, there's, there's end-user benefits like those that'll be incorporated in this package as well.
Well, I could go on and on. I mean, I sent like about 50 questions to you guys, and I really appreciate all of your, all of your answers and for providing that information to me. So, and I like the idea of being able to utilize it to put out an e-newsletter. We had, we don't, haven't had anything for a really long time from the township, and there's a lot of different information coming from different places. And I think to have one piece that's going out there, that's comprehensive to the community on a more regular basis, is going to be very helpful. So, I appreciate that, as well as the, the Google Analytics. I think that having that and being able to measure and track, and then shift based on audience preferences, I think is going to be great. So, that's all I have.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
So, I see the, the price on, on this, and that's fine. Did you, did you put this up to bid at all, or not? Or you just went directly to them?
You know, we shopped it through three different vendors, our current provider, and then two others. And it was a negotiation based on the professional nature of what it was we were negotiating. There's not a specific set of bid specs that, that this type of, this is more of a discussion and workflow than it is, you know, a unit quantity measurement type of bid situation. So, we did informal RFPs.
But how we got the price was, was done competitively.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's very, it's a very niche kind of service that you're providing. I mean, it's for governments, it's for...
Sure.
Yeah, it's a, it's very specific.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm all for anything to clean up that website. That is an absolute disaster, and anyone that's ever used it, it's...
That's kind of an overstatement. I mean, don't, 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 don't go too far on that.
When you have to whisper that, it's not that bad. We all know. It's like, you know, it's like looking under my, my son's bed. It's just a lot in there, and you don't know where, what you're going to find.
There's a lot to unpack there, but, you know, the website, as far as I'm concerned, is, is, is fine. I mean, for what that's worth. My question though is, what's the benefit to the public? What are they going to, what's the so what to each of the taxpayers, and how is this going to make things easier for them?
So, right now, it is not a user-friendly experience, just like the Commissioner just said. You are confronted with a ton of information. We're inundated with calls about how do I find this? When is, when is this event? And we want to improve that for our residents. We want a seamless aesthetic experience, but also a functional one. So, when our folks, our residents are coming to the website, we want it to be very clear where they can find that information they're after. We want this to be a time saver for them and a time saver for us as staff, in terms of our workflow and efficiency. And we believe this product delivers that. And do you want some specific examples?
Sure.
Okay. So, an example is for a meeting like this evening, this would be housed in one portal. So, tomorrow, and, or whenever it goes live, a resident can key in any keyword, a searchable keyword, and find specific agenda items, specific discussions. They can do a streaming video and stop it at a certain time to listen in on our discussions. So, that's just a tiny example of efficiency.
I think that mostly, well, not mostly, a lot of people go on the website to find specific information, such as the ordinance relating to towing, or the, or a resolution related to disclosures from, from 2016. Will it have any bearing on that? Or, or will you still be able to search, or, you know? Again, I, I don't really have a lot of complaints with the township website, because you can go to meetings, and then agendas, and look at minutes, and the minute, meeting packet. So, it's all there by date. Is that going to be improved? Or is that going to be the same? Or is that going to be different?
I believe you're speaking to our, the concept of archives. Our goal is to always provide an organized archival system that will not go away. We just want to improve the presentation of it, and the searchability of it.
And just one other thing, have the folks, the folks at Granicus, they don't need to keep me on the email anymore. They can just delete me, and so they don't need to copy me on all the ads and all the updates and things, so, thank you.
Motion to unsubscribe.
I have a, I have a question about the, just the terms of the contract. As it's presented, it's five years. Is this renewable yearly? Are we locked in for five? I'd just like to know a little bit about how we're fun, you know, the contract length and...
Sure.
Conditions.
Yeah, these will be five single-year renewals. It will agree to all five, but it's subject to Board appropriation annually, as is all of our multi-year contracts. So, that lang, the non-appropriation clause will be in there.
This isn't, well, this is germane to the discussion, but this doesn't apply to this resolution. Does this get us any closer to updating the report-it link? Which we haven't had an update on in close to a year.
Yeah, it, it does. It does. Because we know that this site works well with the, the particular vendor that we're looking at for that software, because it's happening in our neighbor's town.
Yep.
So, it, it does.
Okay, so when can we...
There's an additional cost to that, that software that we'll bring back, but...
Do we have a timeframe when that'll come back?
We're going to work, if this gets approved tonight, we'll work with Granicus on the implementation of the, the site itself.
Okay.
It, it could be that the two happen at the same time, but it's definitely something that, it, it's still there, Commissioner. I, I promise you, it's not something that's fallen off. We actually, we looked at Granicus's solution for that, and it's very robust, but a little bit too much. So, the one that we looked at, that our neighbors are using is, seems to be a sweet spot between too much and useless, so...
And just so the people, people watching on TV, or people in the audience know, what I'm talking about with the report-it link, currently, if you want to, if you have a tree down on your street, or your power's out, or you have a wire hanging in your front yard, you'd have to call your Commissioner, or you could try to navigate the website to find the link there, but it's going to be difficult to find. We have neighboring townships who have a report-it link, where you just, I mean, you go on, you hit a link, you identify your address, your phone number, and the issue, and then that goes directly to the township, and then they can communicate back to you that they've received it. And I think that's where we need to get to as a, as a community, particularly for the resident's benefit.
And not that, that's a discussion for another night, but the, the other benefit is, is that it tracks when the report was made, the response time, it maps it. So, we get the information on the administrative side to see trends, how we're doing and responding, and those types of things too. So, and then it's, the residents will see that as well. It's all open, open-sourced information.
And just what's your timeline on this, Molly? From like start to finish, or to launching it?
My understanding is six to nine months for implementation, but within that process, we will be able to launch certain pieces of the software first, second, and third.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Mark D'Onofrio, again, Ward 7. I just have a quick question. Are you going to be coding the website yourself, or is this a content management type of service?
It's proprietary. Excuse me? It's our own.
Yeah, it's proprietary. There will be no coding done by the township.
No coding, so you're going to be doing all the coding?
Everything.
Okay. And when you do the coding, are you going to outsource it to anybody via like oDesk, or like Upwork, or anything like that?
It's our own.
And for your security protocols, what do you use for that?
Federated, Microsoft Azure. Can you, Terry, can you know?
Yeah, I just actually, I'm not like trying to put you on the spot or anything. Yeah.
If my, I need to have my mic on, but if you're asking a question...
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I think, yeah.
Scott Hoffberg with Granicus. We're a Fed RAM certified system, so we have to go through a 15-stage security protocol. So, about 50% of the federal government uses us. You're going to get the same security. It's through Microsoft Azure, and it's a tier-three redundant center. One that's in Arlington, I'm sorry. One that's in Arlington, Virginia, and another one that's in Iowa. So, in case something, God forbid, happens, we'll always have a backup 1,500 miles away.
And you work with also the federal government as well?
Fifty, oh, yeah.
Oh, you do?
Homeland Security, White House, Social Security Administration, they all use our system.
And if you're hacked, perchance, unfortunately, are you able to...
If the website is hacked, for example, will you have a coder available to immediately respond to that? So, it's not just like a content management service, and then people have to wade through like, you know, tech support for a couple of weeks, or anything like that?
If, if, if it goes down, we'll know immediately.
You will?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Isn't it nice how this agenda is proceeding, given the old format of meetings, where we do public comment right before the vote? It only took four and a half hours of embarrassment, I guess, for Mr. Larkin to go back to that, anyhow. What, and by the way, Mr. Abel and Mr. Booker, you are accepted from this, based on your vote two weeks ago. But it is Orwellian that this Board would have on this agenda, something having to do with, quote, "government transparency," end quote, in light of the resolution that was passed two weeks ago, where this Board decided that it was going to turn the Carfax cameras off for most of their meetings. All I heard from Lisa Barowski, five minutes ago, six minutes ago, was, "Oh, this is about government transparency and access." Access to what? You are, on one hand, limiting the amount of data that the public can expeditiously get to, because you've turned the cameras off, but by the same token, you are engaging Granicus to update your website. I am in agreement with Mr. Booker. That website is not particularly hard to navigate, provided you can navigate to something. We're seeing this again tonight. This Board voted on a separation agreement, and you're still not going to give it to the public until maybe Tuesday. Maybe. Why? What's the rationale behind that? Why are we waiting? Why didn't you send Mr. Rice out?
Please focus on the agenda item, Mr. Sherry.
Why didn't you send Mr. Rice out to use the Xerox machine? Give him an Aaron.
Please focus on the agenda item, Mr. Sherry.
Have him to do, this is commenting on it. It says government transparency.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on the agenda item.
I am focusing on the agenda item. You are not allowing government transparency because of what you deign not to make available to the public. Monotone interruptions will not throw me off my cadence, Mr. Larkin. The whole point of having an easy-to-use website is to allow the public to get to the data. You've now voted on a separation agreement. We still can't see it for the rest of the meeting, even though you could easily make a Xerox copy of it. Okay? We can't see the Carfax meetings, or at least most of them, because two weeks ago, you, Mr. Larkin, pursuant to a resolution introduced by Ms. Barowski, decided to turn the cameras off. Why are we paying money to make it easy to get to data, if you're not even going to provide the data? Again, Orwellian. Makes no sense. you, Mr. Larkin, pursuant to a resolution introduced by Ms. Barowski, decided to turn the cameras off. Why are we paying money to make it easy to get to data if you're not even going to provide the data? Again, Orwellian. Makes no sense. And again, accepted, Mr. Abel and Mr. Booker, because they elected to make the determination that the public should see the data, even though accountability and openness, that's not on the Radner Republican Party's masthead, that's on the Radner Democratic Party's masthead. And now Mr. Larkin showing up late is whispering to somebody else up on the dais. That's his choice, just like it's your choice not to make the separation agreement until after this meeting is over. Please, stop pretending to be
Focus on the agenda item, Mr. Sherry.
Please focus on what I'm saying and not being a partisan hack, Mr. Larkin. It's annoying. It is easy to say that you are pro-transparency. It's harder to actually vote for pro-transparency measures. Let's not pretend that making it convenient to get to data is in any way a substitute to actually providing the public with the data. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment on the township's website? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Underly absent. Moving on, item 5B, I understand, has been pulled. Moving to item 5C. Ordinance number 2020-02, adoption, authorizing the current refunding of the voted open-space bonds, Series 2014, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11,855,000. I will so move. Is there a second?
Jack? Is there a reason why it was pulled? Item B?
Item B was misadvertised.
Okay, so it'll be on a future agenda?
It will.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
I just had one question on this item. So, Mr. Wolf, you have all the updated township information for the official statement? We, it's up to date with like number of employees and everything? You have, you have a township section in the back, right? Don't see it on here. Yeah. Right? And my question was, is there any? It says economic and demographic information relating to the township of Radner, so we have that, that's updated. It's not just pulled from the last, from the last issuance, right, Bill? Yeah. My question is, is it updated information and not just from the last official statement? Population trends, age distribution, that that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, the information's reviewed. It's, it's basically the same layout as it is on all of our bond issuances, and then the data points are updated as new information is available, or not just available, but documentable. So there, I mean, there's some information in here that is tied to our January 31st, 2018 CAFR.
And that, those items that are tied are properly reflected in this version, or they still need to be updated?
Yeah, they're dated. Yes, sir. The data, the information available is on all the tables.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just wanted to make sure that that was, and then the, the other question I have, and I thought bound counsel would be here, is there any concern, or is there any law that would substantiate a claim that this is not electoral debt, but this is now non-electoral debt by the issuance of this current refunding? Is there any legal precedent for that, or what is the status of that? So that's my question. I see Suzanne's not here. If challenged, what would be the potential for someone to prevail in saying that this is no longer electoral debt because of the refunding?
I, yeah, and the reason why Suzanne's not here is because of the, the amount of detail and questioning we went through when it was introduced, so we didn't anticipate that tonight. But the, the issue of electoral debt came up throughout the drafting of all these documents, and Cozen O'Connor has said without question or hesitation, it's electoral debt, there's, that's not changing, and if challenged, I'm not, I'm not the lawyer, but I can't imagine a scenario where that would be held up.
Rich, DCED would not approve this if it wasn't electoral debt. It would be a different process for them. So ultimately, the state approves, you know, all the township incurrence of debt, whether electoral or not. This is the same original electoral debt that the township incurred as a result of the referendum, so, I mean, your question about what's the likelihood, I would say zero.
That's, that's, that's very, that's very, that's a very strong stance.
Of success? I mean, is there some legal theory that you can share with us?
That's my question. I don't know.
Well.
So, so here's the issue. Remember, these bonds, what we're refunding are bonds that were used, Ms. Morgan's not here, but it's her favorite thing. This, these bonds were used to purchase the property at Arderson. The Arderson property, the claim was, was that the referendum from 2006 authorized the purchase of open space. They, it was, the, the, the concept was that that was attributable to these Arderson land bonds. That, that was never thoroughly vetted, but it was accepted by the board as true. The concern or the issue that I'm raising, and to get your opinion, and I think I've got it right now, is relates to the fact that electoral debt does not count towards our debt limitations for the township
Correct.
Because it's voted on by the public. My question is, what is the potential, if someone would make the argument, because a lot of people were against us expending this debt and said that the, that the original referendum did not account, account for this debt, what would the chances be, and what are the issues that we could face, and what is the potential if someone would take the, take the position and sue the township and say that, no, this is not, no longer electoral debt because you have refunded, this is new debt for purposes of counting towards the debt limitation? It's a, it's an obscure point. You just said it's 0% chance.
Of being successful. Zero. Of being successful.
0%, that's big.
Correct.
So.
It's electoral debt. I mean, there's, there's no doubt. Track it all the way back to the voter referendum. DCED approved it. DCED has to approve this also. It'll go to them. If someone wants to challenge that, they go to DCED to challenge that. I, you know, I mean, you're speculating some issue that I don't see exist, so that's why I
Well, I'm telling you, it does, it does exist, because in 2000, when we issued these bonds originally, there was a contingent of people that said that those bonds were not in fact authorized by that referendum.
Yeah, but that was addressed, I mean, that was addressed at the time. I mean, there was a voter referendum.
But now, but now we're giving that contingent a new chance by refunding it, and my concern is, is, does that open it up again? You're saying, no, it's, there's no chance whatsoever.
And the refunding saves the township taxpayers how much money?
It's about a million dollars, he said. It's like $60,000 a year, or something like that. That's what it's saving.
That's what you do, whether it's electoral, non-electoral debt, when the rates support it, the economy, you refund it.
Well, again, the issue, the issue is not the savings. It's, it's, it's no question, it's a good deal. The issue is
Zero.
Are you going to question, people are going, is going to say that this takes it out of that electoral debt? And you say zero.
I'd like to see something in
All right, can, let's put that in the minutes, minutes, too, I think, that'd be good.
I think we've got it. 0% issue's been raised. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Just if I, just the, looking on page 23, it is actually, there's a, there's a whole calculation on the township's legal debt margin and how much we're allowed to incur. And there's two columns, one for non-electoral and one for electoral. The gross borrowing capacity for net non-electoral debt is almost $111 million. So our capacity and our, our non, net non-electoral margin is over $155 million. So if it were challenged and we had to reclassify the debt, we're still well within the limitations. In either case, and, and, in every case, these calculations, the, the capacity always far exceeds the township's ability and willingness to repay or set taxes at a rate that people are willing to pay to repay the debt, so even if we are challenged, we'll be, we'll be fine.
So just to paraphrase, what you're saying is, in the unlikely event, and John said it's zero.
Zero.
In the very unlikely event that someone does prevail on taking the position that this is no longer electoral debt, you're saying, we have plenty of debt capacity anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's all well and good, but I, I don't see it in the, in the form of bond counsel opinion on this issue, so that's why I raise it. Maybe it's in here and I missed it, but
I hear you. I think it's a reasonable question. I think we've gotten two good answers to it. Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment?
You, as a lawyer, Mr. Larkin, thinks you got a good answer, when it was a 0% chance by an attorney, and now you're looking down. There's three lawyers up here on this dais, okay? All of which, well, strike that. Don't know how long all of you have been practicing, but my goodness, think back to law school and giving a declarative answer like that. The answer always is, it depends 0%. 0%. Does that sound, by the way, to the lawyers up here, I'll accept the people who aren't lawyers, like a real, well-thought-out opinion, 0% for legal advice for anything? The law can always change. There always can be contingencies. This is not appropriate, and it kind of dovetails back from talking earlier about the RFP. Maybe ask another RFP for a solicitor, because it's not appropriate to be saying 0%. I've been advising clients for almost 15 years. I've never said anything is 100% or 0%. Ever. It's not appropriate. What you do is, you talk about risks and upsides and give a thorough explanation, just like you should if there's a proposed resolution on, oh, I don't know, towing. Research. Think through. Don't put, yes, I know, hilarious. Okay? Think about this. When somebody asks a lawyer who's paid for by this township to give legal advice, and the person comes back with, it's my professional opinion, it is a 0% risk, be suspicious. The law does not operate usually in any type of absolute. It's always subject to interpretation, precedent, new precedent, contingencies, planning. A gentleman from the audience spoke earlier tonight about Mr. Norsini and how excellent he is. I've never heard Mr. Norsini use things like 100% or 0%, and I'm not in his field. I'm in the legal field where everything is usually in shades of gray. Again, don't put up with this. If somebody says that, who's supposed to be counsel to this township, don't have a Jack Larkin response of, we have a very good answer. No. You have an answer, Mr. Larkin, that you may like. That's different than good. That's different than well-thought-out. That's different than, I took a look at the law and the contingencies, because as soon as somebody says zero, and then in the next breath goes, well, actually, Mr. Booker, do you have any, you know, blah, 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 blah? That's not somebody who's thought through. Again, if you have an opportunity to go out for RFP for a manager, and you do, consider it for the solicitor, because that was a ridiculous remark. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero with Commissioner Underly not on the dais. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-03, adoption, special-purpose parking, handicap parking spaces. I will so move. Is there a second? Is there any commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero with Commissioner Underly not on the dais. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-04, adoption, amendment to the civil service ordinance. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero with Commissioner Underly not present. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-01, amending the code of Radner, of the township of Radner, Chapter 267, vehicles abandoned. This is the adoption. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Underly not present. I understand that ordinance number 2020-05 has been pulled.
Yes.
So I'll move on to resolution number 2020-23, revised, authorizing
Is there a reason why it was pulled?
Yeah, in talking to Officer Glock before the meeting tonight, there's a couple additional tweaks that he's recommending that we need to go back and look at, so it's clear. Nothing substantive, but we're going to have to make a couple additional edits and then re-advertise it. So it'll be back in front of the board, probably in two weeks.
Can I ask questions about this, or should I wait?
Let's wait. Resolution number 2020-23, revised, authorizing the president of the Board of Commissioners or the acting township manager as the officials to execute all documents for the application of a multimodal funding grant. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah. I'm against this grant, applying for this grant. I'm against this project, and it's, it's in my, it's in my, my ward here. So I would move that this, this be that this be rejected and that we use the money that we have for this project that we plan to put into it for something, something else that's actually wanted by the by the constituents. So what was, what was deleted? What was taken off the agenda?
The Knox Box ordinance was taken off.
What about the, the townships, the townhouses?
That also was taken off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any additional commissioner comment?
Well, I just have a question for Commissioner Booker. So what, any insight on why your constituents disapprove of this project?
Well, the project is for the expansion of that, first of all, it's a lot of money that we're applying for the grant. It's a large contribution by the township, and what this will do is increase traffic on King of Pressure Road, and it'll allow for additional throughput on King of Pressure Road for traffic in the area by adding a new, new lane. It will expand the road and provide for more traffic on King of Pressure Road. I believe that more traffic on King of Pressure Road is detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the constituents in my ward. I believe that additional township expenditures will be caused as a result of the additional traffic, additional hazards, and that it will detract from the quality of life of, of people in Radner, and will generally be a detriment to my neighbors and to my constituents. And finally, it will add to the unsafe condition of trucks and other vehicles hitting the bridge at King of Pressure Road. It's, this is not a project that I ever requested. This is not a project that I ever wanted to do, and there are much, much better uses of funds in this township for projects in all of your wards than to do this against the will of the township commissioner. As far as the, the folks who are against it, there's quite a few I can, I can forward it to you, but in general, more traffic on King of Pressure Road, I believe, is detrimental, and I, I will not support expanding this intersection to allow for more traffic, which is just going to cause more, more problems for which is just going to cause more, more problems for, for my neighborhoods. Thank you for offering, thank you for asking the question.
Just one question. Commissioner Booker, would you consider if we don't get the grant diverting some of those funds to the county line road in my neck of the woods or fixing the sidewalk?
Absolutely. The township will put in a million dollars or so. We're going to get a million dollar, 1.2 million dollar grant.
All right.
With that, there's so much, there's so much more important items than, than doing this. So I would certainly, and I made this at several budget presentations as well. And so I have many other things that I think would be more beneficial for the township.
So you would be amenable to reallocating those?
Absolutely.
So the money for this is in the bond. This was one of the projects that rose to the top when we put out the criteria, so around safety. This also has matching grants that are coming from, funding from Cabrini and isn't Eastern, or it's just Cabrini? I thought Eastern was involved as well. So it is a, a project that multiple people are involved in. There is multiple dollars, and I believe when we first discussed this, probably about two years ago, I think it was one of the first projects when I was on the board, we had residents who came out and who are in favor of it. So, and the money from the township is in the bond. And we, I think we are restricted as to how we can just move that money around. That's why we had to specifically list the projects in the bond. So I will be supporting this. I think that if we can get additional grant funds, and I think anything we can do to alleviate traffic and traffic congestion in areas that are heavily congested is a good thing.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Larkin. Just one more comment response. I think, I think you're, you're right, Commissioner Barowski. Eastern and Cabrini do plan on contributing for this. They are very enthusiastic for this project because it benefits those, those institutions. It does not benefit the neighbors. It will provide easier throughput, more cut through, more traffic, more bridge strikes, and more potential danger to, to people who still walk on King of Pressure Road with dogs and, and on Pine Tree Road. It's, it's really not safe to walk on the roads, and I've talked with our police about this. There's nobody here. The police have told me, or the superintendent has told me, that it's not Radnor's policy to recommend to anyone to walk on the streets where there's no sidewalks. These streets have no sidewalks, and people do on occasion walk on them. This, the people who do that, this further endangers them. And why this, I agree with you 100%. This is beneficial to Cabrini and Eastern. It is not beneficial to our constituents and the people who, who pay taxes in my, in my ward. So thanks for the question.
Is there any staff comment?
I'm just gonna, I just.
Sorry, is there any more commissioner comment?
Yeah, I just, one more comment is, we've, we've denied, in my two years, we've denied multiple projects over traffic. The only place that we don't seem to do it is in Ward One. And I spend a lot, a lot more time there these days with soccer practice and other activities. King of Pressure Road is already jam-packed, and I've heard people talk about it being a cut through. I see this as increasing traffic, and I think, you know, when the commissioner for the ward's saying his residents are concerned, we should give him the same level of respect that we give other commissioners when projects are in their ward. So I'm going to, I'm not going to support this resolution.
I guess I'll just toss in, this is actually an intersection that Commissioner Booker and I split. I think that he makes a cogent and valid point. If you provide traffic improvements, then you invite additional traffic. I will also say, however, this is a really gnarly intersection right now, and providing the improvements that we are talking about, I think will improve the existing conditions because it's a bad intersection there right now. So to the extent that I have half of it, I'm the commissioner for half of it. I'm saying that I'm going to vote for that. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Motion fails for lack of a majority, three to three. With Commissioners Larkin, Barowski, and Mulrooney voting aye, Commissioners Farkey, Abel, and Booker voting nay, and Commissioner Enderly not on the dais. Moving on to reports of the standing committees of the board. Are there any standing committees of the board who wish to report? Hearing none, I'll move on to new business. Is there any new business?
I have one item, a new business. It's an item that I raised with you. I, I know you've been away and maybe you didn't see. I emailed you this afternoon. There have been questions, an issue has come with respect to the water supply in the township and testing, et cetera. And I've requested of President Larkin that we direct that issue to the Board of Health for their review and comment on the water quality standards in light of its recent high profile in, in various publications and periodicals.
I, I got your email. I responded. I, I understand why it was unclear, but I believe that we are referring that to the Board of Health. So nothing more to be done right now by us. Is there any additional new business? Hearing none, I will move on to old business. So I have drafted what I believe to be at least a version of what we have more or less all talked about in terms of taking the next steps with respect to the traffic island at the off route of 476. It's at the very end of the packet. It's the sense of the board. The reason I did that is because I feel like too often when we ask staff to do something and give them the sense of the board, we end up giving them contradictory instructions, and then we just say, go do it. So we have at least a starting point. I'd like to say that we're going to fundamentally kick to the Shade Tree Commission the question of how are we going to replant in the initial instance? And they will then give us at least some ideas. They'll come back to the board, and we would then put out an RFP for whatever it is they're requesting, be that landscape designer, landscape architect, a, whatever they've got, gardener, I'm open. There's a more specific sense of the board at the back of the packet. Is there any commissioner comment with respect to the sense of the board? It's not a motion, so I'm not going to move.
I, I think that's fine. My concern is you have stumps there that has to get ground up. I mean, it's, we're a long way away from, I think, just giving it to Shade Tree and saying, hey, what do you want to do with it? I think alongside with that, we should be being proactive in getting bids and kind of bidding that out and looking at other alternatives from landscape architectures that would have to deal with a clear cut to this level.
So I don't know that we have to do anything with the stumps that are there. I'm not saying that we don't. I'm saying I literally don't know the answer to that question. I could easily imagine someone telling me that keeping the root systems in the soil is beneficial for erosion controls.
That's what people have said. Not to grind the stumps until we know what we're going to do.
I agree. I think we don't know what we don't know. We're not tree experts.
And that's why I'm suggesting we should send this to Shade Tree. In the first instance, they would make recommendations, and I'm specifically asking for three potential replanting projects to come from them. And I'm kind of imagining that they would give us something in a tall grande inventi in terms of cost. And we could then, as the board, set out an RFP that would indicate what our appetite was to pay. So if they say, seed the place with wildflowers, and we say that's a great idea, we can send out that RFP. But if they say it's going to cost a million dollars, and you should replant the whole thing with mature hardwoods, if we have the appetite to do that, then we could set out an RFP for that, too.
So I think in addition to an RFP, though, I'd like to make sure that, you know, we've had many people come forward and offer us either no cost or low cost options. So I don't think that just an RFP, and, and I think that Shade Tree will take that into consideration. But I, I think there might be other, there might be additional ways that we can get to a good place without having to maybe spend a whole lot of money, at least getting to the point of stabilizing. We've had landscape architects come forward. We had offer for, you know, people to reach out to University of Pennsylvania. I think Temple University as well. So there are a lot of options, and I'd like to explore those as well. I mean, this is fine. I'm fine with this as a sense of the board in order to get Shade Tree talking and putting something together. But I think that the, the Shade Tree Commission is going to have to engage with others in order to come forward with a full.
Jack, can I just, sorry, Lisa, can I kick one question to Steve McNellis? Because I was driving two Saturdays ago. You were snaking. I saw you snaking the, the hole. Are we going to have more, more stormwater issues with that hill at this point, or is that kind of like a one-time anomaly?
I believe it was just a one-time incident. We, we checked at the last storm, and there was nothing there. I think it's just the debris that blew down from 476. Because I went home after that on Saturday, and rated Brew Mall, that was flooded, too. So I think it was a one-time incident.
Mr. Abel?
Yeah, so before we get to talking about the sense of the board, can we just get clarification? Are we allowed to do work there? It's not township property.
So one of the things that I would be expecting Shade Tree to come to us with while they're proposing these projects would be, what is the scope of our authority, and what do we have to do, if anything, in order to get the appropriate authority? What I've been told is, and I have no idea whether this is correct, but what I've been told is that the township has an agreement with PennDOT that allows us to perform maintenance at that site. I would be shocked if PennDOT would oppose that maintenance, including replanting. It would make sense for us to reach out to PennDOT and double check that question and find out what it is that PennDOT wants us to do with that area, if anything. I think that the Shade Tree Commission should be at least looking at that question in the course of coming up with their projects. And of course, if they don't, they might end up saying, we don't have the wherewithal as a commission to decide who owns what. That's more of a legal question than it is a Shade Tree question. Then when they come back to us with the projects, that would be our first question to determine.
So, I mean, to me, it makes sense, before we even get to that point, why wouldn't we just ask the township manager or the solicitor to engage with PennDOT and have those answers upfront? So then we're giving direction to the Shade Tree Committee.
I have no problem with that. We could add that as a part of the sense of the board, just ask staff to, in interfacing with the Shade Tree Commission, give them the basis of what their authority would be, or the scope of what their authority would be in proposing projects. Is there any objection to that generally?
No, in general, I don't think PennDOT, PennDOT generally, before I even make that statement, I don't know, has, have we heard any objections from PennDOT on what was done in that area at this point?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any.
We didn't receive any calls at Public Works either.
Okay. So in general, I think that would be able to do the work subject to approval from PennDOT, which I don't expect that they would, would withhold. But my concern is more of holistic, which is, anything that's done there really should, or the concept was it would tie into the, to the overall Radnor gateway concept. So the gateway is designed to be aesthetically pleasing and cohesive entrance to Radnor and to the business district. And at least the way I've talked about it with various constituencies is that it's really meant to enhance the neighborhoods as well as the business district and to provide a, a nicer environment for people to come and do business and to engage in commerce. So I, I think that this particular area is tied, could be tied into that, and that anything that's done really needs to look at not just the four acres near the 476 interchange, but how that would tie in with sidewalks, lighting, monuments, and other enhancements to Radnor, enhancements to Lancaster Avenue from the Villanova Center all the way to the center of Wayne, which is in the Wayne Business Overlay District, or even to Banbury, so west of, of the center of Wayne. And so that we should think in the concept of an overall gateway theme, how we can tie that in with that. And we started that. In, in the eighties, you have our various rock structures. So down at Airedale Road, we have Uncafer Park, where we have the, there's a rock structure that was built there in the eighties. And now we have the Welcome Radnor sign that was, was built a couple of years ago. And we take that through, there's some rock structures near Spruill Road. And then there's also the Cairn and the Griffin at the exit to 476. And then there's other monuments, et cetera, at, at Wayne. The concept being that that's the gateway. It should all tie together and provide for an aesthetic and functional benefit to the business and, and the community. So what I would like to look at is having an overall presentation, and hopefully we could get somebody to, to help us to have a vision of it that would be some, somebody who would do a drawing or some, some rendering to talk about how we would do this. And I know Chris Todd and Wayne Business Overlay District talked about uniform trees with uplighting and uniform sidewalks. That type of thing, I think, would be a benefit and to try to tie this, this area in with that. The cheap way to go, like you say, the, the, the small, medium, large, I don't know the Italian from the, from Starbucks.
That is Starbucks, not Italian.
Right, right. But the, you know, the least we could do, we could just plant it with, with grass seeds and walk away. But, or we could grind the stumps, plant it, regrade it, or then, or we could put other decorative elements in it and spend a lot of money. I mean, we could do a lot with it. So I think this board needs to really think about what, what, what is worth to everyone, and then is there a way to tie it into a grander program? And it, the program I'm discussing may cost money, may cost, may, may require a bond issue. But something like that, I think, could be beneficial and could help enhance Radnor as a, as a, as a better place to live and to do business.
Is there any additional commissioner comment on this?
I guess the one thing I'm curious about is that because it's PennDOT land, you know, I'm hearing already we're thinking all these grand plans, which I would love to see. But is there money from PennDOT to do some beautification? So I know we did the clear cutting, so there may not, but if there were, I'd like to take a look at what those options might be, just putting it out there when we're talking about PennDOT.
We should consider tearing up the PennDOT portion of Eagle Road and see if we can get money from them to fix that. Okay, so this is not something that we're going to be taking official action on, but there's obviously a lot of people who want to comment on it. So I'm going to just kick it first to staff and then to the public. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. The bottom line is not my tax dollars. As I understand it, the clearing was done with private dollars. Therefore, whatever you do with it should be done with private dollars, not a bond fund where you, we have interest to pay, not our tax dollars. Our budget is extremely tight, and absolutely not. It should be simple. It should have only native material, which will be surviving 20 years from now. A very simple concept, because, no, absolutely not. There are other issues in this township that are far more important than correcting a mistake. Thank you.
I'll try to do better this time. Can I ask you, how did this come about, the clear cutting? I mean, the whole, I mean, it's a lot of land that was clear cutted. I'm just, I'm kind of in the dark. I don't know how it happened. It's hard to come up with a solution if I don't really know how it came about. I mean, you had a forest there, and now you have a denuded landscape. It looks like a strip mine. Is, no one knows? It just magically happened one night?
Let, let me address it. The, the township had a contractor and had funding from a private agency, the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust, and engaged a contractor to do the clearing that occurred. Simple as that.
Okay, so a contractor affiliated with the township cut all the trees down?
It was a contractor that was engaged through the RECT and the township to clear that site.
Okay, so since Radnor had played some role in that landscape, I think Radnor needs to solve it. And I think Commissioner Booker. And I think Commissioner Booker presented a novel idea that it really is a gateway. And I think that sometimes bad things happen and you can have a solution that comes from that. Really, we need an urban design strategy for when we come into Radnor that differentiates ourselves from like, say, Lower Merion Township. We're going to have a website that looks exactly like Lower Merion's website. I think Radnor needs to have its own identity. So, if we come up with a solution, if it goes to the Shade Tree Commission, I think we should also give it to some urban designers who have more of a creative solution. I'm sorry, I keep on doing that. Have more of a creative solution to what happens. And I know, I know a lot of teachers from University of Pennsylvania, my alma mater, in my urban design program and even some of the landscape architecture classes I took. I guarantee you, a lot of people love to redesign that landscape and turn something that was unfortunate into something that's a lot better. And, I mean, I don't have a lot of time to speak, but I did take a video of the landscape. And I can show people later, not here in public time. But it is pretty bad. I mean, you walk there, I mean, on one side, so you have like a King of Prussia Road, and then you have Lancaster Avenue, and you're looking at this big mound. Looks like something from like World War I. And the other side, there's this little trail where you see runners running by the Radnor lacrosse field. And so, really, people don't know how to navigate through that landscape. And you're talking about bikers and some kind of thoroughfare that goes from, say, the Wayne all the way over to that gateway. So, just a few things for consideration. And I don't know, maybe we can turn something that's bad into something that's a lot better. And we can talk about, have an urban design discussion in this township, not something where the township has no branding. I think the township needs to have its own identity in the same way that when you go into Lower Merion, you know you're in Lower Merion. I wish Radnor had that same kind of vision. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chip Addis from St. David's, Asken Road in St. David's. First question I have is, what changes are you all making within the township so that something like this can never happen again? Any ideas?
You mean as far as legislation or?
Well, something went very wrong here. Right? I think we can all agree to that. Nobody's willing to answer the questions. But what are we going to do to prevent something like this from happening again? Have those conversations taken place?
I think this question...
Okay. Second question I have is, what's the role of the Shade Tree Commission? Is the Shade Tree Commission a body of people that design landscapes? Or are they, do they serve in an advisory role? Do they review plans that come before them? And then weigh in on the merits of it or come up with improvements to that plan or whatever the case might be? So, I'm not quite understanding what the role is of our Shade Tree Commission. But if it's simply an advisory role, like most committees are in the township, I'm not seeing why we're now sending this to Shade Tree to come up with a plan for how this land should be replanted. So, I don't know exactly how it might work within the township. I don't know if that's a township manager role who can bring organizations together and vet them and try to come up with some creative solutions to this and then bid it out or run it by Shade Tree? Or, you know, I'm sure there's other organizations within the township that we want to get their input on it too. Environmental Advisory Committee and so on and so forth. But I'm just wondering why send it to Shade Tree to come up with a plan rather than send it to or present it to professionals and people who are in that business and are, you know, professionals in designing land like this and coming up with creative solutions?
So, Chapter 263 is called Trees. And in that, if you read that section on the, under the municipal code, that deals with what the Shade Tree's function is, what their job, powers and duties of the Shade Tree Commission. And Shade Tree's advisory to the township talks about recommended locations for new trees and removal of unsuitable trees. They publish on the township website suitable species of trees for planting, native, for Radnor Township.
I'm just going to jump in because I've cut off Commissioner Booker twice now. Public comment, you can ask as many questions as you want to, obviously.
But that...
We really can't respond to them. I'm going to suggest that you can look up what the Shade Tree Commission's role is in our township ordinances. And if you want to talk to any commissioners offline, you're absolutely free to do so. If you want to give us your thoughts, this is the time to do it. Not really to have a dialogue. It doesn't work in this format.
Thank you for listening.
Sorry, how about maybe changing the bamboo ordinance? Because it grows pretty quickly. Okay.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Sorry, public comment?
First and foremost, just because it doesn't work for you, because you maybe be awkward with your words, Mr. Larkin, doesn't mean that people on the board can't respond to public questions.
On the subject of the Shade Tree and the sense of the board, Mr. Far... Sorry.
Sherry. Work through your words, then speak.
Just going to call you Farhi from now on.
Was that a Freudian slip there?
Well, that's somebody being timid and awkward with their words. That's not really a characterization most people would give to Freud.
The trees.
It is, however, something. And losing the forest for the trees might also be apropos for the awkward Mr. Larkin. So, a couple of comments based on what's already been said. But just wanted to clarify, the fact the board declines to answer a question is not the same thing as the board being precluded from answering questions from the public. It happens all the time, especially if a commissioner is questioned individually. So, Mr. Larkin saying that it doesn't work, that's for him, not the board. Other people are a little bit more effective and speaking extemporaneously
Mr. Sherry.
As opposed to in a monotone interrupting. So, a couple of things that were said, and just to piggyback on the last speaker. You all heard John Rice giving an explanation about how those trees were removed. Just to that end, I'd like to read the title of a recent newspaper article that appears to be on point. "Radnor Township Manager Suspended For 30 Days In Tree Cutting Blap." I don't really recall hearing anything from Mr. Rice a couple of minutes ago that in any way deals with that at all. Is that an appropriate description as to what happened and what to do moving forward? Which is what I believe the sense of this board is all about. Part of having an open and honest dialogue with the public is describing the issue honestly, or at least at a minimum, trying to correct public misinformation to the extent it exists. I looked at that article and I didn't see any type of demand for a retraction or any type of modification to that article.
Mr. Sherry?
It has to do with the trees. I just gave you the title. Stop being confused deliberately.
Focus on, it's Mr. Sherry.
No, focus on what I'm saying, Mr. Larkin. Stop being partisan. It's annoying, okay? In order to deal with this issue going forward, which you've titled as rehabilitation of the area, one needs by necessity to talk about the underlying issue. How did it get to that point? And this board declining to do so and the solicitor giving a synopsis, which now makes me very nervous about a synopsis of the separation agreement that doesn't include that which is in the newspapers, is alarming. You can't take concrete steps to rehab something...
And the word, Mr. Sherry.
...to rehab something if you're going to be timid and not actually address the underlying issue. How can you rehab it? How can you prevent it from occurring again if you're not going to look at the underlying issue?
Please focus.
I am focusing. The fact that you're displeased doesn't give you opportunity to interrupt. Stop it, okay? The issues in terms of the gravamen are obviously foundational. All you're talking about now, and you've attempted to do this, Mr. Larkin, you don't even know whether or not you have approval from PennDOT to do this. And yet you nevertheless want to task some advisory board with some role. That doesn't make any sense. But what really doesn't make any sense is to not have a dialogue with the public is how you got there. How do we rehab in the future if we don't address the underlying issue? In terms of deforestation, if that's the correct term of art? The answer is you can't, because you can't plan ahead for it, because you're not honestly engaging with the public, because you're just waiting to interrupt rather than listen. That's timid. That's pathetic.
Focus on the...
Stop being embarrassed and start listening, Mr. Larkin, okay? That's the point.
One minute.
Now, when the solicitor in the future, using this as an example, gives a rationale that you know if you've been paying attention to the public record does not coincide with what has been reported, please interject and ask the solicitor for clarification. I'll be back to talk about the solicitor in a couple of minutes. Bye.
Is there any additional public comment on the issue of replanting at the island at 476? Hearing none. Does the staff have the sense of the board on this issue? We are now then in public comment. Mr. Sherry? Oh, sorry?
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing? Do we have a lot of, are you all students that are here? Where are you guys from tonight? From Eastern, you're all from Eastern? All right, well, welcome. It's nice to have you here.
Jack, I have a couple of issues on old business.
Okay, sorry, any additional old business?
Yep, so I've got, well, I've got four. The police are not here, correct? So, can we push and have a discussion on security cameras at the next meeting? Solicitor Rice, do we have an update on the towing ordinance?
No, no update.
Will we have something by the next meeting?
We should.
Okay. Last meeting, we approved additional funding from the 1.7 for the Willow's Park project. I've raised concerns, not with the end goal. I mean, I think we all share that, you know, the hope for success. But I do have concerns with spending township dollars before. I've seen that they've raised their share. So, by next meeting, can we have an update on their fundraising efforts to date?
But on that approval that we gave, that was, that was for the water. Wasn't that for the water?
It's still spending out of the 1.7.
But that was our, that's an obligation we had anyway, correct?
And I've disagreed with that the way the lease was written from day one.
Yeah, I guess the issue is irrespective of that. I mean, is there any update on the fundraising from WPP?
They were coming to do a presentation for us in February.
I've asked for an update for the last three months and haven't had one from the township manager.
I thought they were coming, so maybe we can ask them to come and do a presentation.
Well, Bill, I would just like an update at the next meeting on fundraising.
Yes, so we'll go to Willow's Park Preserve and ask them to prepare an update for the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. And then, can, I guess, for Steve Norsini, can you give an update on the Sawmill project? A lot of residents are raising issue. They don't have insight into the project. They see a number of trees coming down. They've questioned whether there's tree protection in that area.
Was this for the trunk line, sir?
I believe so.
That comes through Skunk Hollow?
Yep, yep.
So, that was the replacement of 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer trunk line as well as a stream crossing, concrete encasement under the stream. So, they, where they came through, there was actually not a whole lot of viable trees. A lot of that was brush. There is tree protection and some fencing in some areas. We are at the stage of the game where there'll be replanting whatever trees were required in the contract and the site will be stabilized. So, it's pretty much done except for the stabilization, sir.
So, at the end state, trees will be replanted in that area?
Not, there was a minimal amount of trees because this is the easement for the trunk line. So, we don't want to plant that heavily so that in the future crews can't get through there. That was one of the issues we had with just the brush. So, is when you go down the turnpike and you look and you see a path that's relatively cleared for the oil pipelines, not that drastic, but that's what it's similar to. We cannot, I would not recommend replanting that heavily with trees over top of a sewer pipeline that carries over a million gallons a day.
And we're also going to be putting in the, or at least like leaving space because that's where the trail is going to go through.
Correct, Commissioner. If the Darapoli multi-use trail gets funded in that section, it literally comes right through there.
Is there any other old business? Hearing none. Mr. Sherry, floor is open to you. Anything you want to talk about? Public participation is open for Mr. Sherry, as he requested.
There could be others of the public who want to comment.
Yeah, it's kind of on the agenda. No, he's just trying to be cute. It's funny. It's all right, Mr. Larkin. Humor's challenging. I don't master it. Anyhow, so a number of topics here tonight to address at the end. I just want to start by saying though, that, I mean, this township is not descended from fearful people. It deserves not to be currently governed by them either. What we have seen tonight in terms of Mr. Larkin changing the manner in which meetings are run from merely two weeks ago to this week continues to demonstrate a timidity that I think this township does not deserve. Two weeks ago, Mr. Larkin had a very, very strange process where he demanded public comment before board comment and before staff comment and wouldn't even allow any public comment after amendments. It apparently took four and a half hours of that being demonstrated to him repeatedly that it doesn't work for him to change it, again, without any announcement whatsoever. We see that now, though, in another format for tonight's meeting, which is the refusal to direct staff to immediately provide the public with the separation agreement associated with the now former township manager. And this sort of cross-talk about, maybe Tuesday. There's no ability to hold that back. It's a public document. It's the subject of official action taken by the board tonight. Why do we not provide it to the public, at least those at the meeting tonight? My suspicion is, is because there's something in there that you don't want the public to comment on, at least in the moment. That's timidity. That's fearfulness. That's not appropriate. It's the same type of mindset that was behind, I believe, Ms. Barowski's resolution two weeks ago to turn the cameras off at the Carfac meetings. Again, the fact that certain people are uncomfortable speaking extemporaneously and get embarrassed and tripped up by their own words is not a rationale to not provide the public with access to the data. We see this repeatedly. Now, what do we learn tonight? Well, we learn that apparently in the future, there's going to be an RFP for a township manager. But that required me coming up to the lectern and saying, "Where are you with this now that he's resigned?" And then Mr. Larkin started to talk about a process that may sometime come about. Why is that already the situation? And more importantly, why isn't there an RFP for the solicitor? You got another example tonight of what, at least in my opinion, is indefensible advocacy to say 0% in response to Rich Booker asking a direct question. And then on top of that, you got another example. Jake Abel, at the end of the meeting, asking Solicitor Rice, "Hey, where are you with that towing resolution that we talked about two weeks ago?" Rice hasn't gotten around to it yet. Why? It was on the agenda two weeks ago. I sent this board case law that I believe was at least partially on point along with a memo shortly after the meeting. John Rice still hasn't gotten around to apparently looking into the issue, at least not thoroughly. And literally, two minutes later, Commissioner Abel asked Mr. Norsini a question and he gets a very detailed response. That issue, at least as far as I know, was never on an agenda. Mr. Norsini couldn't have planned for it, but he was ready to answer it. Think about that stark distinction between Mr. Norsini and John Rice. "Hey, are you ready to come on it?" "No." "Are you maybe be ready in two weeks?" "Okay." How's that appropriate for a solicitor? Again, this isn't novel, but we are all paying for it. We are paying for it as members of this township insofar as having a solicitor that is not ready to advise the board. And as a result, the public doesn't have the information for another two weeks. Mr. Larkin, however, is more concerned about the next minute. I would urge this board, going forward, if there are going to be topics for official action... action, barring any type of overriding privacy or confidentiality law, that you provide the public with that. Because I got to tell you, trying and hoping and maybe praying that the public will only get to see the separation agreement days or weeks after this meeting does not build confidence. It builds resentment and paranoia, and especially, given what was in the press about the manager being suspended, the idea that you would not provide that tonight immediately after you vote on it, even though you should have provided it before you voted on it, is disgraceful and timid. Please do better. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Some move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Before 9:00 PM.
[laughing]